Oops, Herman.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Almost done, just a moment.
Oh geez.
Okay, you're good.
Madam Mayor, it's six o'clock. And we are live.
Excellent, thank you very much. Good evening, everyone, I'd like to call this Tuesday, May 5th, regular city commission meeting to order, and ask the clerk to call the room, please.
Mayor Pam Triolo? Here. Vice Mayor Andy Amoroso?
Here.
Commissioner Scott Maxwell?
Here.
Commissioner Omari Hardy?
Here.
Commissioner Herman Robinson?
Here.
Thank you.
If everyone would please rise for the invocation led by Commissioner Robinson, followed by the pledge led by Commissioner Maxwell.
We gathered to make decisions for our community. May we use only our best skills and judgment, keeping ourselves impartial and neutral as we consider the merits and pitfalls of each matter that is placed before us, and always act in accordance with what is best for our community and our fellow citizens. And we should, um, just take a moment of silence to, uh, know of all this suffering and, and the consequences of this terrible pandemic, and pray for our leaders, from Washington all the way down to Lake Worth Beach, to do what's best for our, uh, the health and safety of our community. Amen.
Amen. Vice Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I pledge allegiance
To the flag.
of the United States of America. And to the republic where we stand.
One nation under
indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone.
Wait, are there any additions, deletions, or reordering? Not that I'm aware of.
Oh, guys. Yes.
Commissioner Hardy?
Uh, I would like to remove items I, J, and K from the consent agenda.
They would be, hold on, I don't have a paper copy, I only have on this computer screen here. I can't go that far, okay. I, J, I, J, and K?
Yes.
Okay.
You want to move them to off the agenda completely, or you want to move them somewhere?
To, uh, new business, it's just, you know, we have a few hundred thousand dollars worth of land sales on the consent agenda, I don't, yeah, I, I think it would be more appropriate not to have that on the consent agenda.
Okay, so that would be C, D, and E. Okay, I'll, uh, you've got a motion to change the, do I have a second?
I, excuse me, what, I have my hand up, um.
All right, you guys, are you gonna use your real hands, or your, or your computer hands, because I have to know right now before we start?
Well, the computer hand is up.
I don't see it.
Little blue hand on the, uh.
Okay, if you just show an on, a chan on the screen too, but it doesn't, okay. All right. Yes, Commissioner Robinson?
Okay, I need to pull, uh, item under new business, item A. Uh, it in no way represents the intent of my, uh, motion, and, uh, there was enough said about this to the city manager that, uh, it just mis- misrepresents, um, what I was intending to bring forward. So I'm want to move it to our next regular commission meeting, and, uh, reword it appropriately.
Okay. So I'll need, uh, uh, I'll need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Move.
Still moved.
Seconded, all those in favor state so by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
May.
May. Okay. So we'll move on with that, then we're gonna go on to item, hold on one second, I gotta pull this, hold on one second. Yes?
Um,
Ready?
As a, as a point of parliamentary inquiry, I'm, I'm, I'm wondering if, if, uh, Christie Godot can tell us how under Roberts' rules, things are removed from a consent agenda.
Sure, Christie, are you there?
Yes, Madam Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, are you called in, or on screen?
I'm on screen, I'm not on video, would you like video as well?
Yeah, please. Do you mind?
No, not at all.
I haven't, I believe.
I believe Commissioner Hardy had a question with regards to how to remove things from consent?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I'm, you know, the wonderful thing of having these computers in front of us is that I'm able to, 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 to look it up myself, but I, you know, I want to make sure, you know, my understanding is, you know, any member that wants to remove an item from the consent agenda under Roberts' rules, could remove an item from the consent agenda. Uh, otherwise it'd be the dissent agenda. Um, so I'm, I'm wondering what, what that's about.
Well, I, I believe historically, the way that the city has proceeded is that it, the agenda is set and published. And once it's published, it comes before the city commission, and if there's any additions, deletions, or reordering, then a vote is taken to change the agenda as published.
Right now, that's, that's the tradition, but is that, you know, does that tradition match Roberts' rules? Because what I'm, what I'm looking at here under Roberts' rules does not match the tradition, typically under Roberts' rules, the chair asks, um, you know, who wants to, you know, does anyone want to remove an item? Someone says that, then the chair immediately removes the, you know, the item. That's, you know, the way that I've read it since, you know, the last meeting where we had this discussion, and, you know, I don't want these consent agendas to become contentious, but if there's not consent, then it should probably be removed, and that's what Roberts' rule seems to say.
Um, well, I, I haven't specifically looked up that issue in Robert's rules of order, but I've always proceeded this way, the meetings that I've attended for the city, is that you vote on removing something from consent. Um, and, but I don't believe, you know, we have to be careful because we have our own rules of procedure, that don't really get into this issue, and you have to be careful, obviously, with Roberts' rules of order, because sometimes it talks about different assemblies, and whether or not it's a legislative assembly, or whether it's a smaller assembly, so, you know, I'm happy to, to, to research that issue further, but I've always sort of been based on historically what the city has done with regards to setting the agenda and then making changes once it comes before the city commission in a public meeting.
Commissioner Maxwell? Your, your volume's, your mute's on still. Keith, can you unmute him?
Yeah, I'm sorry, could somebody explain to me how to turn on my hand on the, on the computer here?
If you down, go down to the bottom of the screen with participants and click on it.
Oh, I see, thank you very much.
Yes.
Thank you. That is all.
Okay, thank you very much, so we're gonna move on to presentations, a quarterly update by PBSO given by Captain Todd Baer.
Hey, good evening, everyone. Happy Cinco de Mayo. Waiting for the PowerPoint to go on, right now I see the mayor.
We don't see you.
Yeah, I'm not on the video, there we go.
Okay. It's up.
Okay. This is my quarterly update on crime data. I kept the PowerPoint kind of brief this time due to being a virtual meeting, I didn't want to have too big of a file to email over. So I'm happy to answer any questions at the end, if there's something usually there that's not this time. Next slide. I'm gonna cover the uniform crime report from the data that we send FDLE, and then they publish for the calendar year of January to December of 2019. And then I'll address our, our plan to address that crime data, our overdoses within the city, and I'll update on COVID-19 from our PBSO District 14 perspective. Next slide. I don't know if you can see this, and I'm gonna cover the, the highlights on the next page or two, but that's our report that we get from FDLE twice a year, and this is the annual one for 2019. Next slide. Unfortunately, overall, for 2019, our crime was up 5.2%. That was mostly carried by violent crime being up 10.2% and property crime 3.5. Obviously disappointing. It follows three years of double-digit decreases that totaled, I believe, 40%. So we're still trending down long-term, normally I would have that slide, but I didn't want too many videos and graphs and whatnot, but, uh, we still look good on the, uh, you know, three, five, 10-year slide based on those huge gains from 16 through 18. Street robberies and auto burglaries continue to be the, uh, one of our main issues. And this past year, we had a spike in aggravated assaults, which is, you know, the, uh, threat of death or bodily injury with a weapon and the apparent ability to do so, we had a, we had a 15% increase in those, which really hurt us on the violent crime. We can go into the factors, there's a lot of factors that cause crime, to go up and down, a lot of the socioeconomic stuff, it could be who's moving in, or which bad guys are getting out. Also, the census data, I'm hoping, I'm hoping we get our census numbers up, because we're still somewhat hampered by the, the low census reporting, because that's where they figure in your, your crimes per 100,000 and such, which is also hurting us, even in the good years, so hopefully, uh, we keep getting that message out to get the census up. Next slide. These were the ups and downs, murders went from four to six. Sex crimes were down 5%. There's that robbery number, they were up. We had a couple good years on robberies in 16, 17, and 18, and they were back up last year, and they're trending that way so far this year. Like I said, the aggravated assaults was the number that really sticks out with 221, which was up 15%. Good news is, the burglaries, it was mainly the, uh, home burglaries were down quite a bit, and we made quite a bit of arrests on, on burglary, which helped. Worked well with the state attorney's office to get some of our career burglars put away for a while. Auto burglaries were up, so we did really good on house burglaries for it to be down that amount with the auto burglaries being up. And then one disappointing one as well was auto thefts, with all the, uh, ALPRs, tag readers, cameras, and all the arrests we made, we still had 5%, 5.5% more vehicles stolen in the city. So we were a little surprised by that number. Next slide. What's the plan, the plan is to stick to the plan. That's the plan we've used since I got back here as the captain, and, and the crime has gone down significantly, and that is, uh, an almost equal focus on the serious crime as well as the quality of life issues, coupled with, uh, the real-time crime center use, the cameras, the tag readers, putting in for the grants when we can. We utilize our CP and street team guys. They're our ace in the hole for, for fighting these, these crimes that spike up. We try to do as many operations with the specialty units as we can throughout the, uh, throughout the year. And as I mentioned earlier, we work very closely with the other state attorney's office and the US Attorney's Office, trying to get the, uh, the career offenders locked up and, and out of the city for as long as we possibly can. We had several special operations scheduled, a lot of this has been hampered by COVID-19. But, uh, part, as part of the grant and just daily business, we had a, had a lot of good things in the works and scheduled in the future, so hopefully we're able to do a lot of that, uh, still with this COVID-19 issue. Next. There's the overdoses, and you all get a copy of this if you can, if you can't see this, I'm not sure if you can see it or not, but, uh, we, uh, actually cannot see the last month, but we had a, had a, it's trending downward overall, and it's trending downward somewhat when you look year to year, which will be the next slide. It's very similar, it's, it's very unusual how it ebbs and flows year to year in a similar way. There's a couple outlier months. One interesting thing, I don't know about you all, but I have not gotten a complaint on a sober home in quite a long time. So that's, that's encouraging news. Next slide.
Bruce, we saw through to April 2020 on our slide, on that slide.
Yeah, that, that's it, it's correct, I just, I have your faces over half of it.
Okay.
You'll see, um, you'll see we had a couple outlier months on this one, January of 2020 was high, and, uh, March of 2019 was high, but other than that, you see, it's kind of ebbs and flows, and we usually pick up in the summertime. But, uh, it's a lot better than when, when we started this, some of the numbers are down almost 50%, so that's encouraging. Still, still a lot of overdoses in seven square miles, though. Next slide. Uh, COVID-19 update, the district, uh, I just wanted you to know, we're, uh, we're communicating with the city staff, and I know I speak to, to you, uh, on a, on a frequent basis, I speak to the city staff almost daily, county fire rescue often. So, uh, we're fully operational, not only as an agency, but as a district. We're going out fully stacked every shift because we've canceled all leave time and training. So we're putting out a full complement of deputies on, on each squad, which is very helpful. As far as interactions with the deputies, with the public, you may see some changes if you haven't already, uh, when you call dispatch, they're gonna ask a few more questions. When the deputies respond, we're gonna try to meet with the outside and keep that social distance, uh, we're wearing our PPE regularly now, so, um, we're fully operational with what we call a PPE pause, where, uh, we're, we're taking that time to make sure everybody's safe. As far as crime, at least in our district, and it, it varies district to district, city to city, but in our district, the first seven to 10 days, it was, uh, pretty quiet, everything calmed down, and we thought that would be maybe one of the very few silver linings to this. But after about 10 days, it started to pick right back up with the regular crime, and we're actually a little busier at points because we have the additional calls related to COVID-19. Domestics are up, mental health calls are up. We're getting a lot of welfare checks, rightfully so, from people out of the area wanting to check on family members that they can't get ahold of. The food distributions are going really well, but, uh, the, the Tuesday food distributions take our whole squad and, and then some. We bring in a lot of deputies from outside the district and, uh, enforcing all the emergency orders, so we're actually busier than we were, but the good point is, we're fully staffed every shift, so that helps. As far as the emergency orders, we're trying to be reasonable with everybody, uh, we're asking the public to help us help them. We're trying to use education and persuasion over citations or arrests whenever possible, but, uh, we really need that compliance on, on all the different orders for everybody's safety. So otherwise, uh, we're hanging in there, I've had a few deputies go out for testing, but knock wood, none of mine have come back positive, we have had positive in the agency, but not our district. So that, that's good news as well. And with that, I'm open for any questions.
Anyone have any questions?
I had, uh, just two, uh,
Commissioner Robinson?
Related to domestics, do, do you track, you said they were up, uh, any statistics on that, or?
I do, I don't have them in front of me, I do have statistics on it, and that's definitely one, that's not a, a Lake Worth Beach issue, that's, we're seeing that across the region, uh, that they're, they're up, and I'm sure they're up across the nation.
So your quote, your, your quote was in reference to the district, not to
Right.
to the Lake Worth District?
Right, we're, we're definitely busier with the domestics, but it, it is a trend that's not just unique to Lake Worth, it's happening all over.
And one other question, uh, calls for COVID-19, uh, do you track those specifically, uh, to?
We have, yeah, we have a system where we're keeping track of possible COVID, uh, COVID calls for exposure purposes, yeah.
And you're prepared, in the event that they are ill?
Yeah, so, the, the deputies are, thankfully, the sheriff has us well-prepared with PPE equipment, we have enough, and the deputies are wearing it, and, uh, when in doubt, you know, we're treating, obviously, a medical call, a little more COVID-related, but, you know, it's best to assume anybody we're dealing with might have it, so keep that social distance, and, uh, wear, we're, at a minimum, our masks and gloves.
The coach says, plan the work and work the plan, that's good.
Right.
Thank you, Vice Mayor?
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to thank you, Captain, and your staff for, um, coming out on Tuesdays and, and putting all your men and women on the street to help us feed, um, Lake Worth Beach, um, great turnout, you know, we're feeding at least 700 people each turnout, so I want to thank you for being there. Are we doing anything extra, um, to track, um, some of the domestic violence? The, the stress violence, you know, some of the things that unfortunately the pandemic will bring, and, and raise some of our numbers, are we, are we doing anything more? Do you have a separate line item, for instance, for, uh, tracking, uh, the, the pandemic and some of the issues that might arise from that?
We are, uh, thank you, um, the Tuesday events are, are really wonderful, and it seems like they, they run smoother each and every week. Today was, you know, smoother than the last week, um, and we, we do enjoy participating in those. As far as the domestics, we're definitely keeping track of the data, and, uh, we have a, we have a, a domestic violence unit, and we have protocols in place that are still working as far as domestics, we just noticed there is, there is an uptick, and, and it's, it's understandable, everybody's, uh, under stress and, and been in their houses for quite a while now.
And, and then Captain Baer, one thing that we're really trying to focus on is our 2020 census, so we're passing out flyers, um, at the feedings in three different languages, and one of our local municipality neighbors today said that they've given, um, the same sheet to the sheriff's department, and they're carrying them around, I'd hate to give more burden to you, but it would be great if we could give each of your officers a pile of those, so when they come across, um, some of the COVID, uh, issues and/or, um, first contact that they can be passing out the 2020 census flyers to.
Okay.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Captain Baer, I just wanted to, uh, to thank you and your team, uh, again, for, for the stellar effort that you all put in. You know, the word stress was just used a moment ago, and, um, sometimes folks forget that our first responders, uh, they're human beings too, they have families, they have needs, they have, uh, things that they worry about as well, just like you, you know, each of us. So on top of the, the normal stress that comes with their job, and you guys have done a really, really great job. I've heard nothing but high praise from our residents in terms of, uh, how calls are being handled and responded to, so again, thank you so very much to you and your team, and once again, I'll say it, you know, I think PBSO is one of the finest law enforcement, uh, agencies in, in our country, and I'm very proud that you, uh, uh, work with us here at the city of Lake Worth Beach, thank you so very much.
Thank you, uh, the troops are doing good, the morale is, uh, the morale is up, and the troops are doing very well. But we thank you.
Thank you, Captain Baer, and in our regards to everyone, again, keep up the great work.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, folks, let's move on to the approval of, oh, I'm sorry, public participation of, wait, I'm moving, I moved too fast. Hold on, my screen, I hit it, sorry, guys. I'm used to working with just a piece of paper. Commission liaison reports and comments. Commissioner Robinson?
Again, first, uh,
I'm sorry, all right, I'll just make someone else.
That's all right.
Okay, okay.
I'll keep it short.
What I had for breakfast, let alone who I picked last time.
I'm, I'm hoping that staff understands the importance of return calls. Uh, when, when, uh, citizens call, uh, they, they expect a, a return call, and, uh, it should be within 24 hours. I want to congratulate the, the graduates, uh, Lake Worth High, and, uh, hope that they, uh, celebrate, uh, in the best way possible. I was in contact with the, the five nursing homes in town, and, and they all seem to be doing, uh, very well. One of them mentioned, uh, if we could get gowns to them, that would be appreciated, but, uh, all of them seem to be, uh, uh, practicing, uh, uh, good, uh, healthy, uh, requirements to, uh, keep their staff and their patients, uh, actually, uh, healthy, so, uh, I was, I was glad to, to hear from all of them, that, uh, they're doing well. And, uh, uh, happy Cinco de Mayo to everybody.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I haven't got much, other than to, once again, uh, call out many people, which I won't call out their names, but the, the many people in the city that every day are out there, uh, helping their neighbors in a variety of different ways, um, you know, it's, it's amazing, you'd, you'd think that after five or six or seven weeks, that people would start to tire a little bit, and some of that spirit would be, uh, waning, but it seems to get stronger and stronger each day, and I just want to thank all those folks out there, you know who you are, with, with all the extra things that you do for our community. You know, like, we keep saying, Lake Worth is, Lake Worth Beach is a very, very special place, and I'm proud to call it home. Okay, we mentioned the graduates, um, just a few minutes ago. And believe it or not, I was actually thinking about this, I mean, I don't think any of us really know when the end of this, um, what, how you want to describe it, the, the current situation that we're in is going to last, but I'm just wondering, uh, and I, I know I normally like to focus on things that deal specifically with, uh, the pandemic and the health emergency, but I'm just wondering if, uh, maybe we couldn't, uh, will we have some time to think about this, have a discussion, maybe we could plan something a little special and different for the graduates of Lake Worth High School. Uh, after the pandemic is over, we start to get back to some sense of, of normal daily operations, I don't know what that would look like, but I think it's something to consider, I think, you know, uh, when you think about it, graduating from high school or graduating from college is a big deal, and people work very, very hard to get to that place. And, uh, it's disappointing to see that, that, that the pomp and circumstance might be taken away, so, I don't know, maybe we could think of something we could do in some small part to, to give them some sort of a celebration and recognition after this, all, all said and done. And that's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Hardy? You're muted.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, the first thing I'll say is, nationally, um, this is, and internationally, this is obviously a huge tragedy. And, you know, I just wanted to take a moment to acknowledge that a lot of people are suffering. And, you know, a lot of people, um, unfortunately have lost their lives. And, you know, for every person who was lost, there's a, a loved one, there's a, you know, there's a mother, a father, a son, a daughter, a brother, sister, you know, and, and, and that is, um, really tragic, so, you know, there are about 71,000 people who have died due to COVID-19 in the United States, about 1,400 in, uh, the state of Florida, and about 200 in this county, to my knowledge, thankfully. Uh, no one in this city, um, has lost their life due to COVID-19, but there are a lot of people out there suffering, and I just wanted to take a moment to acknowledge that. The other thing is that there's a conversation that's happening right now about, um, reopening. And obviously, this is a necessary conversation to have, because you have, obviously, one day we will be a fully open society again. And you want elected leaders, and folks who are not elected, but who are still leading in their communities because they work for, uh, local governments, state governments, and governments elsewhere, to think through this problem, that's what you want. But you don't want them to rush through, um, this problem, and the conversation about reopening has taken a turn that, um, really has shocked me, you know, in full acknowledgement that 70,000 people have died already, and that many more will continue to die, there are folks who are saying that we should take steps to reopen the economy and reopen society, and just live with the fact that folks are gonna die as a result of this. And that seems to me, um, to be, you know, completely and utterly callous. Um, and I would ask anyone who takes that position, which member of your family, uh, would you have be counted among that number, uh, that lose their life as a result of this virus? And, you know, yeah, I don't mean to go overboard here, but, you know, former civics teacher, right, one of the things that you teach kids, the first month of civics, you know, you're teaching that we give freedoms to get them. Everyone has a right to live a meaningful life. And even though this virus affects some people more than others, it affects African-Americans because of existing health disparities more than others, it affects, uh, you know, elderly people, you know, your right to go to Fuddruckers should not trump my right and the rights of other peoples to be able to live meaningful lives and have kids and raise kids, because, you know, thankfully, we didn't die in a pandemic, and so I would just ask people to be patient and to consider really what's at stake, and to consider how they would feel if the very next person to die from this because of someone's recklessness, uh, were them, or someone in their immediate family, or someone who they love. That's what I would ask folks in the public, folks in the city, to think about going forward. Now, um, as far as this body, I regret that we were not able to take some items off of the I regret that we were not able to take some items off of the consent agenda and I would very much like Christie, you know, to take a look very closely, not just at the traditions of this body, but at what our actual rules are and what Robert's rules say. Those items, you know, I wanted to have them off because it's a lot of money, you know, it's 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 over two hundred thousand dollars worth of, you know, deals and contracts that are discussed in those items, I, J and K. And while I don't have a problem with them, um, I I I don't think that things like that should be on the consent agenda. I believe we've had discussions about that in the past. And, you know, again, I don't think it's appropriate to have stuff like that on consent agendas. Back to those inequities. Two of them, uh, one of them relates to access to the internet and one of them relates to uh health disparities and 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 folks who are affected by these things. We had a a a brief mention last uh meeting about broadband and about public broadband or public wifi. And um it was the case that the CRA applied for a grant. The CRA did not get the grant, but had it gotten the grant, uh, we would have provided um, you know, some some matching dollars to help out there. Here's what I know. It is really clear to us that it's utterly unfair for a child to have the world of learning closed to them because they don't have the money or the access to the internet. And even though Comcast, the AT&amp;T have their respective programs, uh, there's a bottleneck right now as as far as service is concerned. You know, you only have so many people. It's hard to get the bodies out into these people's homes to install the wifi. And, you know, it it's 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 difficult. It's difficult for people to get the centers in it. And so, you know, what I will be proposing, hopefully by our next regular meeting, is for the city to figure out how we can fund without waiting for grant processes that are uncertain to play out, how we can fund public wifi uh in the poorest parts of our community, which unfortunately is a lot of our community, but we need to figure out um how to make that work because there are kids who should be able to learn, but they can't because they don't have access to the resources. And um, you know, we are as local as it gets as far as government is concerned and we have the ability, I think, to step up to the plate and to take care of this. And I I I I do believe that this will probably qualify as some 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 sort of infrastructure spending. Um, you know, the spending on that kind of network because of its durability, et cetera. So, you know, that's something, you know, I don't think we should be waiting for, you know, grants to 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 come through. You know, I think we need to solve this problem. The other thing, as relates to African Americans, uh, a lot of people have drawn the line from COVID nineteen and health disparities, racial health disparities with with COVID nineteen. They've drawn the line from that to asthma because asthma affects African Americans at rates much greater than it affects almost everyone else. And this has to do with where African Americans live, which has to do with things like redlining, uh, which was promulgated fairly and it has to do with local zoning decisions, right? That zoned African American neighborhoods um next to businesses that foul the air because of what they do, whether it's in Texas, whether it's refineries or or um, you know, other activities elsewhere, right? And so, you know, um, there's 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 one more thing that kind of bothers me about this and we've had this discussion on this dais previously and we weren't really considering the implications as far as people's health. And that has to do with, you know, basic zoning issues like multifamily versus single family, right? You know, we've we've had these conversations where um those of us who are elected and some folks in the community say that if you basically cannot afford to uh, you know, save up for a down payment and go to a bank and borrow money and buy a home in one of our very quiet communities, which are away from Dixie Highway because they're they're um, you know, closer to the water or just away from Dixie Highway, you know, in the center of one of these neighborhoods that basically if you can't afford, you know, to do that and you live in some multifamily housing that, well, you know, these these very busy corridors are the places for multifamily housing. You put your multifamily on Dixie Highway, you put your multifamily on Tenth Avenue, you put your multifamily on Lake and Lake Avenue, where obviously the roads are busier, obviously there are more cars and quite obviously, you can look at studies, the air quality is worse, right? And so the unstated implication, which isn't embraced by a lot of people, which is that folks who can't afford a home should live in parts of the city where the air quality is worse and the streets are less dangerous than some of our more quiet, single-family communities. That's not, obviously, people aren't actively embracing that, but the implication of a policy that says multifamily over here, where the cars and traffic are and quiet, single-family homes over here where the cars and traffic are not, is basically that. That's the implication. And so, you know, I just want to say, long before COVID nineteen struck, local governments all over the country made a lot of decisions that exacerbated um health disparities and other disparities. And, you know, what I want to say is when this crisis is over, uh, we'll have opportunities to undo those decisions. And what I hope is that we'll be more comprehensive in our understanding about how the decisions we make with zoning and housing and other things affect issues like people's health because they absolutely do. There's a lot of documented evidence as to that. So, uh, with that said, those are my comments and I appreciate it.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A lot of Zoom meetings, um, meeting on a regular basis, Palm Beach County League of Cities. Representative Frankel has a lot of meetings um online and uh today she was talking a lot about schools and um again, uh, access to the internet. And we've been continuously talking um the last couple of weeks uh with Representative David Silvers about hotspots in the community. There's been a a few hiccups. Just Savage has been working on statistics and reaching out to um the schools on behalf of the city manager. And we're trying to figure out um the gaps and trying to figure out where we can fill in the gaps. Hardy was absolutely correct. Um, we've been working on um uh some of these issues for years with the CRA and unfortunately, we didn't get funding. But where we are today is the hot, we we're hoping to pop up hotspots. Representative Silvers reached out to Comcast and AT&amp;T. The problem with the hotspots is you have to be close to the hotspot. And um right now, we're asking people to stay home. So we could drop a hotspot, for instance, at the CRA. However, people can't congregate. There's also a few, um, for the lack of better word, um, hotspot buses that the county has. I I believe it's through the school board and we talked about that. But again, the the kids have to come out and participate, almost like you go and get a school book from the bus. So we're trying to stay distant right now, so that's not going to work. So we're continuously looking at that. Representative Silvers is trying to think outside the box and figure out. Just Savage is working with the schools to try to identify um whether they got enough laptops, where we're shy in um actual access with AT&amp;T and Comcast and and how we can fix those problems. So uh internally, we're working on it. Our representatives are working on it. Big thank you to the CRA and Feeding South Florida. Again, we're feeding about seven hundred cars every Tuesday. Thank you to the Sheriff's Department and Public Works for coming out and helping. And again, we're just trying to fill in the gaps. I I a couple other organizations reached out to me today with um a hot meal program, so we'll be setting that up in the next week or so. And and again, just trying to stay on top of it and, you know, identify some of the gaps that we can fill in and then reaching out to the people that might be able to help us. So um, working on this end, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much, a lot going on. My big thing that I've been working on lately right now is uh working on getting some mobile testing units into our city. We see it happening in other cities and I've reached out to um several of our representatives and to several nonprofit organizations throughout the county. Today, uh, an organization uh through Child Services um donated, I think, three hundred or four hundred tests and they did them at Sacred Heart Church today. And uh it was coordinated with the Maine-Guatemalan Center, I believe, and um and that was a a big deal. I think some testing remains there and also had another organization reach out um with some testing. So I'm going to be working on creating some mobile testing sites. I spoke with the city manager about it at the Osborne Center. Hopefully, we can get some testing in here very soon in the next week or so. So that's been a major priority of mine. Also, um, had a conversation, great conversation with Dr. Fanoi today um from the from the schools and uh basically him reaching out to us um to see what our needs were and of and of course, explaining what we were doing and just kind of sit there and talk about the food programs, the feeding programs that they have and some upcoming feeding programs that they're planning for the summer months, when we're still going to be going through this. So I'll keep you up to date on our conversations there. Also had the pension board meeting this morning and uh the, as you could imagine, financially, you know, pensions and 401Ks and everything across the world are are going a bit crazy right now. We seem to be holding our own for our employee pensions. We're we're doing, you know, we're not, we're not doing great and we have an increase, but in some areas we actually did. And we're we're holding, we're not down terribly far like we were back in, oh goodness, was it two thousand and eleven that we had that really bad year that we've been uh trying to move away from? But, you know, I'll keep you posted as best I can and next time I'll bring you numbers. But we actually got the reports in today, so um I'm going to be tracking that very closely. Uh, I want to give a shout out to Patrick Livingston, who's in the uh South End on Wingfield Street, who's been feeding people in our community almost every day of the week he possibly can. And he's gotten help from so many different organizations around, along with our Tuesday feeding program, which everyone has been so pleased, Vice Mayor, and that that has gone through that and said all the volunteers have been just incredible and so lovely and so comforting in a time like this. So thank you so much for that. Also, want to thank the Vice Mayor Protem too for his reach out to the community to provide masks and and uh hand sanitizer and paper towels and toilet paper and necessary items to people that really reached out to us in the community that needed that. So thank you um to all my fellow commissioners, because I know you've all been acting in in many different ways. I also want to remind people that I'm doing videos on Fridays to kind of give us an update as to what's going on and what the recent update for the week is, um, just to keep you up to date, keep you motivated. And to everyone at home, God bless you all, man. I know this is crazy times and everyone's having a rough time of it, but um you hang in there and uh, you know, we're here for you and we care about you very much. And we're going to do everything we can to keep you safe and and I'm proud of what you're doing in the community and getting, keeping those masks on and uh wearing gloves when necessary and 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 protecting your families and social distancing. So washing your hands, you know, it sounds so, it sounds so simple, but it really means the difference between life and death. And and we're very grateful for your sacrifices through this whole time. And uh I can't wait to see you on the other side of this, all right? Well, thank you, everybody, and my fellow commissioners. Let's move on to the public and give them their chance to speak. Public participation of non-agenda items and consent agenda items. Madam Clerk, do you have the cards? You gotta unmute. Unmute the Madam Clerk, please.
So sorry. I have three comments um tonight. Bonnie Bergstein of fourteen oh five Richard Lane writes, "I would like to know why the fuel charge on my last Lake Worth utility bill was so high. The price of fuel is down and I remember utility bills in the past that had a fuel adjustment charges that were in the negative during the winter months and when the price of fuel was lower. I've been a resident of the city of Lake Worth for forty years and I have watched the utility bills continue to rise for twelve hundred and fifty square foot house. The fuel charge on my last bill was equal to one-third of the bill. Especially during this time of economic hardship due to COVID nineteen pandemic, I would think that our city would be doing more to help its residents instead of inflating our utility bills." Thank you. Uh, next, I, we heard from Tammy Panza, it's one sixteen North L Street. Ray, items I, J and K on the consent agenda. I would request these items and similar items be pulled for discussion. I continue to object to items like this in perenns, land purchases and major dollar decisions and perenns being on the current consent agenda. And again, request this be a regular business item where it can be discussed rather than only point five seconds of time being spent on it and not even a word about it in the meeting transcripts on the record. The city is not a property developer. I also object to the city spending money it doesn't have to buy properties and then give them away or transfer them or sell them for minimum cost to organizations that have no direct oversight by the city. The city should not be in the business of buying properties. It puts code compliance and the lean process into a conflict of interest status. Ie, the city could be accused of coding the properties until they're coded out of ownership and then do a land grab on them. That is something I do not want to see the city accused of. If the CRA wants to buy properties, then let them buy them directly and not put the city's motives into question. Then I have um a comment. It doesn't say whether to go on particip- public participation, but I believe that's where it goes. It's an idea for consideration by the commission by Don Rosen shine, one thirty one North Gulfy Road, number three. "In an attempt to continue the discussion of responding to the needs of Lake Worth Beach's small business community, I am offering another idea. Persuade all small businesses to create a gift certificate that city residents and surrounds would be encouraged to purchase from their favorite retailers. The city could be the chief public relations entity to publicize this program. It could be promulgated the same way as bonfires on the beach, First Friday and soccer registrations. More importantly, at first blush, the cost would not be prohibitive. Some significant ads in the local newspapers, spots on Lake Worth Local, Instagram, Facebook, et cetera. For instance, every Saturday for the next number of months could be Lake Worth Beach Small Business Gift Certificate Day with a call for citizens to purchase a certificate from their favorite entrepreneurs. The certificate would not be redeemable until the winter holiday season, thus allowing the retailers a small but possibly measurable shot in the arm to cover them over the next crucial six months. Furthermore, it would highlight the city's sensitivity to local businesses and possibly help preserve or encourage some businesses which is which are on the knife's edge. In accordance, I have visited some small businesses on Lake Avenue and Lucerne Avenue and have found a positive response. Obviously, I have not suggested that it necessarily would happen. But just as obviously, it is imperative that we help our small businesses. The city cannot afford additional empty storefronts. It will sorely cripple future economic development. I am sure that some of you have thought about this kind of idea. I believe it's worthy of a substantial discussion and I would be glad to assist." That's all I have for public participation, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. Okay, thank you. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Eleanor Tate a motion.
At the approval of the minutes, Madam Mayor.
I'm sorry, I keep moving down my screen too fast. Approval of the minutes, Eleanor Tate a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor states by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously and for the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor states by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Yes.
I'm sorry. Yes, nay? Yes is nay or yes is?
The nay is, I'm not approving the consent.
You're not approving, okay, thank you. Motion carries three to two. All right, now my page can move down, hold on a second. All right, new business. Uh, item A, consideration of a vote to utilize the Sook Island docks brought forward by Commissioner Robinson. Obviously, as part of the um consent agenda, when you made your comments, Commissioner Robinson, you said you wanted to remove that for the time being. So did you want a further conversation on this?
Well, I I want a clear understanding that uh and I I I'm sure that the city manager understood my intent to uh have this as fair and open to the public as possible. Uh, I don't, are we, are, I didn't understand the the consent vote. Are we we uh are moving this off the consent or are we going to talk about it tonight?
You can talk about it tonight.
So I had asked to move it because it is inappropriate, it's, it's, doesn't represent the intent of my my motion. I
What can we be looking for when you bring it back?
Well, we have to uh consider the underperforming assets of the entire city. This is one of them. I was, I, yes, I I do want to come back and and hopefully uh have a discussion about um whether we're going to take, you know, just a a simple decision to take one small step towards a a better use of the the docks. It's um, I I met with uh Find and uh Carmen Fair and in that meeting, they said they're not going to do anything until the commission decides to do. to do something. If, of course, if the Commission decides to do nothing, we won't do anything. And if we become a, I don't want to say a do nothing in, in regards to this issue, but it's not insurmountable. And if we're going to be motivated to move forward, I would think that all five of us should be interested in, in at least seeing the possibilities. And if you want to vote on it tonight and kill it, it will, it will reflect on, on Lake Worth's ability to use its, its natural assets. And if we vote against it, it, it means that we don't have the capacity to manage a, a small segment of, of what we could feature. And I guess that's, that's, I was proposing that we do an RFP to see if there's any interest in management by anybody to manage it in, in any way, fashion. The, right now, we are responsible for maintenance of the docks, have no income from it. And it's, it's, the docks are not managed now. It's not fair in any way, shape, or form to have six boats there, not allowing any, anybody to use it as a day dock or to pay for what they're using now. I, I don't understand the reluctance to at least move in a, in a small direction to improving the situation down there.
Vice Mayor?
I'll leave it at that.
City Manager, I need some clarity, because what I'm looking at from Fine and the county is documentation and letters saying that it is not ours, that we lease it from them, and that if we were to do anything and they would agree, we would have to pay back $300,000. Am I looking at it wrong? Because Commissioner Robinson said he talked to some of these people, but the letters that they sent, and it was not in the backup, I, I printed them out and had Debbie make sure that everybody got them. But the response from Fine and the county is that because we took money, just like the parking up at the beach, because we took money, those docks are to be open to all public. You know, I'm not necessarily opposed to doing something, but Madam Mayor, I believe you asked for a overall parks master plan, and we were considering doing something like that, that should include docks, Old Bridge Park, Bryant Park, the golf course, all our park facilities. But City Manager, it, it sounds like that, you know, the county is saying no. And that's what I'm looking at. And that's why I'm hesitant. We keep seeing this item, but I'm hesitant to move forward with anything, because I don't think we have the option to move forward, because we don't have, you know, a clear, I mean, we're, we're renting it, we're maintaining it. And I agree that, you know, there should have been some kind of financing, or some kind of mechanism to, to create some money from this entity. But also, I didn't see in the backup where we were looking to do also an RFP. I saw one organization's name. But at this time, I think it's premature, because I don't, reading the, the letters and everything from the organizations, I, I don't see that we can move forward with this.
City Manager, can you clarify, please? Because I also just saw these things.
Yes, Madam Mayor. Vice Mayor staff has engaged with county staff, as well as Fine Executive Director on this issue over many months. And this has been before y'all several times. It's my understanding, based on the same documentation you have there, and in discussions we've had in the past, that's something that they're not really interested in commercializing that space. It was granted as a public access for day docks, and that's kind of their position, if you read those documents. So it's kind of difficult to exactly figure out a way to make something work there. We, we, we've talked to the Sailing Club, we, we've talked to Commissioner Robinson, we, we spend a lot of time, effort, and energy. We keep coming back to those positions from Fine, the Florida Inland Navigation District and the county. And reimbursing the grants to get them out of the way is an option. It's not something that I would recommend on six spaces, because it's not enough docks. If you had 50 spaces there, which would almost quantify as a marina, you know, the numbers start to work, because you could maybe charge enough over time to finance something. But right now, that's the loggerhead we're, we're running up against, is that position from the county and from Fine. So I guess this item comes before y'all. From staff's perspective, we'll do whatever you guys tell us to do. But we're not clear on what it really is that's being asked for us to do at this point, because this information's basically been discussed before.
Commissioner Hardy?
Follow up?
Oh, sure. Hold on one second, Commissioner Hardy.
Just briefly, Mr. Robinson was correct. And at any given time, there's seven to eight boats down there. You know, we have a mechanism through the Sheriff's Department, it's clearly documented in the letter from the Sheriff's Department and the county, that we should be policing it. We have a mechanism to police it, you know. No one should be using those docks as boat storage for free. If you have a boat, you should, you know, pay to dock that boat somewhere. And these boats, most of them are there day after day after day, and same boats. So I, I agree with Commissioner Robinson, and we have a mechanism to move forward with policing these, and I think we need to. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hardy?
Sure. The first thing that I'll say, first of all, is thank you, Commissioner Robinson, for bringing this item forward. I regret that, as presented, it does not reflect your intention. And I, I recognize that the Commissioner would like to postpone this until the next regular meeting. So when I'm done speaking, you know, I would, I would seek to make that motion. As a matter of fact, no motion's been made, and this is not a discussion item. So if I'm not mistaken, we need a motion, and I will make a motion to postpone this until the next regular meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
There you go.
Okay. Yeah, so, you know, just to, just to, just to finish this comment, I don't think we need the county or Fine's permission to ask their permission to change some of the things associated with these docks. And if, from their perspective, right, they are very smart to not waste their time discussing this issue without getting some input from this body. So the idea that, you know, we should wait for Fine to tell us that it's okay to approach Fine is not the way that we should be looking at this item or any item that may come to us. So when this comes back, you know, I just want us to, to, to consider that. The other thing that, you know, I, I think is important here is, you know, there are lots of things like this that might make us uncomfortable around the city as regards some of our, our, our very important and valuable assets. Whereas Commissioner Robinson said, they're not performing like they could. There are a lot of missed opportunities like this all over the city. And, you know, I, I frankly applaud the Commissioner for putting this on our plate, because this, this could make a difference. And anything that can make a difference is worth exploring. And so, you know, I just ask that when this comes back, we all keep an open mind and try to, try to figure out how to get to yes here.
I was, I was concerned about, I had a meeting with the Lake Worth Beach Sailing Club, and a couple of representatives of their, a couple of months back now. And I'm confused, because what they're saying and what the city is saying and whatever, it's, nobody seems to be on the same page. And I know that there was a conversation that happened between them and the city, I think it might have been the Assistant City Manager, I'm, I'm not quite sure. And they said that the city was interested in having them and their boat, yacht, ship, whatever. Commissioner Robinson, what's the official, official calling of the boat?
Vessel.
Vessel. Having that be kind of like a welcoming center at the, at the docks that we have, the day docks that we have. The issue that I've always had with it is that those boats, those boats that have been there, they've been there for months, some of them, not, not their boat, but these other boats that are there. So day dock people can't use them, they can't stop there. And quite honestly, who's going to park their boat there when there's no security, there's no staffing, there's no, and who would know who was from out of this area that the town is X blocks east if they want to go get a soda or something or other? Because there's no development in that whole, you know, hotel district right now, and hasn't been for a long time. So how would people know they're going to leave their boat or yacht or ship or whatever the heck they have and know to walk that way 15 blocks or five blocks or whatever it may be? And then that their boat will be there when they get back, or that somebody is maintaining it, or that someone's got an eye on it? I like the idea of the Sailing Club being there as a representative, you know, for, and offering programs, sailing programs for our kids, you know? And, you know, why not get for the children interested and get people, you know, onto a boat and learn how to do these? I learned on a little sunfish in an after-school program when I was a kid growing up in a, in a, in a, you know, on the Sound in New York. And, you know, I mean, I, I love the idea of, of something like that, you know? Why can't we, why can't we do something like that? When I asked about it, I was told that Fine and whatever else said that we couldn't do anything on those docks, that that was theirs, and if we wanted to repay the money, exactly what the Vice Mayor said was what I, was what I heard, was that we couldn't, we couldn't manage those. So if they've changed their mind now, we can have further discussions about it. I'm open to that. I don't think financially five docks or rental space is going to warrant us hiring someone where we're in probably, we're breaking, on the brink of probably the next Great Depression after we get through the, this pandemic, you know, and, and wondering where we're all going to find a dime. So I, I don't know if this is the right time to be hiring new staff or whatever, and I don't know if five, five spaces is enough to warrant another department, unless it tied in with volunteers and, and community involvement and kids programs and all that kind of stuff. Who's going to man all that stuff? Who's going to add all that stuff? I don't know if we're in the position of adding things right now in the middle of a global pandemic. But I have no problem with the concept of those guys being out there and, and being a welcome center for us. I love that idea. I think it's a neat-looking ship. I think that it's a great thing, and we're a seaside community. And whenever we can open it up to the children of our community and provide programs for them, I think it's great. We're just, we're talking about these things in the middle of one of the scariest times, and I, I don't quite know how to have these conversations now when my mind is just on this pandemic. It really is. But I appreciate everybody's, and I don't have an argument in this matter, and I don't have a dog in this race, but I like utilizing all of our assets. Vice Mayor Pro Tem?
Well, I wasn't first, but I'll go ahead, Madam Mayor. I think we've, I think we've heard over and over again, when this issue's been brought up, that there are just a lot of obstacles to, to make this reality for a very, very little return on investment. So I'd like to just go ahead and call the question and then call the vote here, and let's move on.
I'd like to add a few things, you know, you know.
The question's been called, unfortunately, and that's the way.
I'm sorry. I, I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Point of Parliament re-inquiry.
Christine?
In order to call the question, you need a motion and a second and a vote. The Commissioner's motion did not have a second. We haven't taken a vote.
I haven't asked for a second yet. I just, I was trying, everyone was yelling out, we've got, someone asked to call the question, so that's a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have a second? So I have a first and a second, which means now, all those in favor states by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries.
Excuse me, nay.
I would, I would like to comment on the, the motion.
That's...
And that's permissible.
At least deliberation is over. No, it's not. We're moving on to the next item.
This is a do-nothing, absolutely do-nothing group.
That's, that's not how.
We're going to spend $100,000 on a study for parks.
Christie?
Right. Point of, point of inquiry.
I'm, I'm speaking with the city attorney right now to clarify.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. So the correct procedure is, when the question is called, is to obtain a vote on it. Now, under Robert rules of order, that has to be a supermajority. So technically, it would have to be a four to one, otherwise the vote fails. So what I just heard was a three, two on the issue to call the question.
Okay.
So the motion would fail to call the question. But also, please keep in mind, you know, under Robert rules of order, technically, everybody should get two bites at the apple. And after two bites at the apple, unless there's a motion made to extend debate and allow further bites at the apple, the debate is supposed to come to a close.
I know. And that's the issue that I have, that I keep running into. And, and everyone wants 16 bites at the apple, and they want to take 20 minutes to make their point, when somebody else takes two minutes, and it's not fair all around. And it's, it, you know, it's, it's, I'm trying to be fair, and I'm not trying to limit conversation, but we also have these things in place so we can get business done, and it's the same people that keep, that keep changing the whole policy. We've been doing these meetings for a long period of time, and we've never had issue with it until recently. And I'm, I'm confused, because I'm, I'm giving, what happens is, if I, if I play it by the rules, right, if I play it by the rules and everyone gets mad, right? So then I give more opportunity. So then I give more opportunity, and I open it up, and then I get called out for, I didn't, I didn't follow the rules that I said to begin with. That's what I was told several times. I didn't follow the rules that I was set to begin with. So you have to decide, do you want me to do it by the rules, but then you have to play by the rules? Or do you want me to not do it by the rules and let you change the rules every time, or let you change the rules when you agree with it and not change the rules when you don't? You can't be that. And it's not fair to me. It really isn't, guys. I'm not trying to be a hard, I'm not trying to play hardball. I'm trying to be consistent here. And I can't keep changing the rules depending on how you feel every meeting. It's just not fair.
But we need to be able to respond to things that, that are part of the conversation. And when one person gets to say something that is just a tad off, off reality, and then isn't allowed to respond, be responded to, it, it diminishes the decision. And, you know, we're going to, we're, we're looking at, you know, you talk about a master plan, you're going to spend upwards to $100,000 to do a master plan, and you're going to have the same question as to whether you're going to, what you're going to do with the docks. What I'm proposing is it, a negative, it's, it's revenue, revenue, revenue neutral to the city to at least allow a proposal to manage it. What, what we're doing is laying, laying the docks empty and allowing PBSO to be responsible when they don't need that much more to do. And it, it just boggles my mind that, that you won't even consider another opportunity to, to consider another method of use. The, the Fine, the Fine group said, of course, they're not going to do anything if we can't decide to do anything. So, you know, if you don't want to do anything, it's, it's on, it's on you, not, it's, it's, you know, it's, it's going to be an embarrassment to the city.
I do want to do something, and in fact...
Man, all you have to do is vote yes.
Hold on. Excuse me. May I speak? May I speak? Thank you. What I'm asking you is that, I, I thought that this whole conversation, even though it was ending right now, because we're not voting on anything in reference to it, I thought it was coming back at the next meeting. Isn't that what we decided? For it to come back at the next meeting with more facts?
No. Madam, so I made the motion. The motion is to postpone the item until the next regular meeting, because the Commissioner brought forward an item, and he felt that when it was put on paper by staff, that it did not reflect the communication that he gave to them. There was a discussion about other issues surrounding the item. But the motion is to postpone the issue until the next meeting to, to, to give Commissioner Robinson and staff the, the, the time to make sure that what's on paper and what is presented to us accurately reflects the endeavor that, that, that he embarked on.
That's exactly what I thought. That's exactly what I thought. So what, so where's the problem?
Well, we haven't voted on that, on that motion.
We were about to. He called the question and we were about to vote on that. And that's how it was laid out. And that's how I thought it was. There is no controversy here. That's what I'm trying to say, guys. Why are we making controversy when it's, we're going to bring it back?
So, you know, look, here, 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 here's something that's true. Okay? Calling the question on someone's item is controversial. Tabling someone's item, especially before they've been given a chance to discuss it, which has happened to items related to the dock before. That's also happened to me before is controversial and it's not nice. It's like, you know.
Me too.
Sure. Well, I, I, well, I, you know, I, I haven't seen, uh, an item that you've brought forward. Um, uh, discussion on that item truncated by someone calling the question or by tabling it before.
Oh, I've had, I've had my ability to call a recess come into question when a recess is just taking a break, isn't it not?
But, but, you know, what I'm saying is I can't fault Commissioner Robinson for being upset. Because another commissioner is trying to call the question on his item before he feels that the discussion on it has been fulsome. Now, I, you know, I get that there's this back and forth about the meaning of the rules. You know, I think just as a general rule, we should try to have a fulsome debate. And try to really get to the bottom of these issues. I know it's been said that we're not here for discovery or deliberation. We're just here to do stuff. I would disagree with that. Um, but that's, I think, a part of the issue here. Now, if Commissioner Robinson has something that he would like to express, I am, I, the, the only way to say is I am interested in hearing it because it's his item. Other than that, I'm good and I've made a motion to postpone to the next meeting.
And as I was saying, that a motion was made to postpone it to where he's going to present again. And he's going to give his options for these things. And we're going to have, I guess, further discussions with staff in reference to whatever. And I'll reach out to the people that I already spoke with. But again, we don't need to make a, you know, I, I understand that it's not nice when you, you don't have some, but that's what happens at meetings all the time. Every week in thousands of cities and towns across the world. It's not personal. And, you know, let's, let's get this done. You've already talked about it, even though you didn't want to talk about it tonight. We talked about it some. And we'll move on to the next time, guys. Come on. We, is there anybody else that would still like to comment or can we move on? I've got a motion on the floor in a second. Anyone want to speak before this? Raise your hand. All those in favor states by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
So who was that? I said aye. Can we have a roll? Aye?
I to postpone it to the next meeting.
Yes. Aye.
Madam Mayor, this is.
What did you say, Commissioner Robinson?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. So motion carries three to two.
Madam Mayor, may I?
We're moving, we're moving on to our next item.
This issue has been brought up ad nauseam. Okay. It's not economically, you know, viable. It's not.
It's revenue neutral.
It's not.
Point of order. Point of order.
Order, please.
No point of order. Okay. You've had your opportunity to speak, Noms.
Point of order. Point of order, Madam Chair.
I'm very disappointed. You've been here discussing over and over and over again. They've already been discussed. We need to be dealing with.
One of order.
Win of order.
Fine.
I understand. I wish. I, no, I just wish when you had, honestly, I completely appreciate your wanting to speak. And that's why I asked before I called the vote, did anyone want to say anything? And you said no. And your card was up and that's why I asked you.
Madam Mayor, very well.
No, please speak, but after we conclude, conclude the vote, I can't do it.
We're here to conduct business. We're in the middle of a pandemic and every time we come to these meetings, we've got to deal with issues that are not directly related to this pandemic. This of all issues.
One of order.
Lies to the issue, to the, the level of serious consideration.
Point of order.
Thank you very much. We're going to move on to a new business B.
Okay, fine.
Thank you. Again, speak up when I ask you to speak up before I call the vote. Please, please, I appreciate you. Discussion to ascertain, ascertain commission direction on how to address the impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic as it relates to the businesses who lease facilities from the city at the beach casino and the golf course. Thank you. An item on what we're actually going through. Thank you. All right. Who brought this? Who put this on the agenda here? City manager? Is this you, uh?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Um, if you'd like me to proceed.
Cool.
This is the presentation on the item since it was brought. Thank you. It's a discussion item, so I don't need a first and, and a second. Thank you.
Not a discussion item.
It's a. Would you like to run the meeting, Commissioner Hardy?
Why, it's factually not, at the very bottom, it says motion. It's, it's not a discussion item. We're expected to make a decision on it and take action.
I don't have that underneath, on my pages here.
It's, it's in the packet. If, if you, if you, uh, you know, download the packet and the memo.
I have it here. Hold on.
It's on page two of the memo toward the bottom.
And, Madam Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, Commissioner Hardy's correct in that sense that there is a motion. There shouldn't be one on there, honestly. And the final revisions, um, going back and forth, working remotely. I was trying to get some consensus among the commission. But my intent was to try to bring something back. Um, hopefully a finished item based on discussion tonight, but, uh, if not. Uh, but I do prefer that this be considered a, a discussion item and, uh, not to consider a motion.
Well, in our meeting, that's the only reason I said that, because in our meeting, I said it's a discussion item, correct? And you said, yes, it is. That's the only reason why I thought of that.
And, and in the title, it says the same. So I just prefer we consider that if that's possible. Do you want me to proceed, Madam Mayor?
Yes, please.
Okay. Um, at the last meeting, uh, we had a conversation, a discussion about, um, what to do with the businesses who lease, uh, facilities from the city on city property. Uh, those are located at the golf course and at our beach casino and the beach facility. The conversation included a lot of various topics, concerns that were expressed by, uh, all of you. Um, in the item, I've enumerated, uh, many of the various options, ideas and concerns, uh, that were talked about. Uh, that included, uh, abating lease payments, deferring lease payments, a combination of abatement and deferment. Um, creating options to choose from, um, based on the above options. Um, tailor the city's assistance based on need. Assistance with loan and grant applications, payback period during the tourist season instead of something that would happen right after a certain period. Uh, utility assistance and require keeping, uh, employees. Uh, there were other things and that's not a completed list, but those were things that when going back through the presentation and listening to the comments of the meeting, uh, those were, uh, the majority of them. Out of all that, um, we tried to hone some of this down to get the conversation headed in a more defined direction into a few options and an alternative, which are listed below. There are a few caveats that in these options, uh, that I want to go over here so that everybody's on the same, um, set of definitions, if you want to call them that. And again, these aren't etched in stone by any means. These are also, um, based on concerns and, and issues. We wanted to make sure when you're looking at these options that you take these into account. Uh, one is, um, instead of picking a, a sort of an arbitrary period that we would determine, um, something that we're calling the affected period of impact, which is based really on a number of days. Uh, with the idea that if you chose this EPI or effective period of impact, it would be something that would be prorated over the days that y'all define, um, as being the time period that you would consider abating or, um, deferring the payment. Also determining if the business is applied for and has received assistance from the government, uh, in the form of loans or grants is something, um, that we wanted to make sure, uh, when you're looking at these options that the businesses have done. And you would need a status on whether they obviously applied and or received money. Um, accepting, um, ascertaining if a business continued to operate or was completely closed down. There were a couple of businesses that actually had to completely shut down, uh, during this period. Um, they didn't operate any kind of a, um, a takeout or delivery business. Exclusion of any business who's involved in a potential sale of their lease and or declaration of bankruptcy. Um, we would like you to consider it that if a business is involved in either one of those aspects, that, uh, the city protects its, um, position concerning those two transactions. Um, season was something that was talked about and that is defined as a period from December 1st through April 1st. That's generally the accepted Palm Beach season when, uh, the height of the tourists um, are in the area and it's, uh, big money making time, especially for these kinds of businesses. And interest is something that, um, we would suggest based on the comments we received from last meeting. That would be calculated on both, uh, the abatement or the deferment. It would be added into the payback as part of what gets paid back in, into the city. Whether we choose one or the other, and that would be something that would be part of the options. The options, um, and again, this is just for discussion to kind of get the ball rolling. Um, option one, if a business, um, chooses to go into a complete deferment of the lease payments that we're talking about in this period of time. Um, they would be allowed to pay that back over one season. So beginning in the period of December 1st, going through the next um, seasonal period to April 1st, we would prorate whatever that amount is for their lease period. Into a payback schedule for them and to be added into their lease payments back to the city with interest. The section, second option adds in an abatement and a deferment. So they would get a 25% abatement of the period of the EPI along with a 75% deferment of the lease payments. And the payback for this option, since they're getting a actual abatement of what is owed would be five months to pay back, starting one month after the complete reopening of the parks and businesses. So the business would take advantage of this. We would go into a period of time where we gradually reopen. And then the month after a complete reopening, a five month period would start to, um, go into effect on the payback of, um, the abatement, uh, I'm sorry, the deferred amount. And we added an alternative to kind of recognize, uh, the situation with those businesses who are genuinely, they, they, they basically had to shut down. And, um, they've, may need a different consideration if you think you want to do that. So those businesses that completely shut down during the period of the EPI, they would be qualified for 50% abatement and 55% uh, deferment of their lease payments during that period. Um, with a payback over one of the seasons. So that would start December 1st through April, when, uh, things get up and running during the tourist season. Again, uh, we tried our best to take all the various comments and discussions and, and points that were made and incorporate as best we could into this next sort of iteration. Um, and at this point, we'd like to, Madam Mayor, ask for input, uh, direction, um, ideas. Um, are we heading in the right direction for this idea? And, um, give us some guidance. We'd appreciate that and staff. Thank you.
Wasn't watching. Oh, Commissioner Hardy, you're at first, then followed by Commissioner Robinson.
Sure. Um, so when I look at the memo here, um, two things pop up that are not included that, uh, probably should be. Um, in this process that has been outlined, the first is an examination of the, uh, Lessee's financial position. Um, you know, that's important. We are effectively loaning them money or giving them money. And before we do that, I think we should determine whether they need our money. We can't do that conclusively. Determine whether they need our money. We frankly can't do that without looking at, uh, their financial position. You know, their cash flow, their liquidity, their capacity to take on debt, pay interest, et cetera. Um, so I, you know, I, I think that should be considered as a part of the criteria to, um, you know, effectively loan these businesses money by foregoing or deferring the payments that are owed to us. Um, the other thing is, um, there's no requirement to seek private capital. Right? So, um, if we're going to be lender, we should probably be lender of last resort. Um, if we're going to be a grantor, we should probably be the grantor of last result. Which means that, you know, they should probably seek private capital first, whether that's debt or equity. Um, and not just, you know, we're not just talking about the, the paycheck protection plan, um, which has been, uh, uh, you know, discussed previously. But other, um, uh, sources of, you know, capital that don't involve us. Um, the other thing is there were some things that should probably be included in here or at least detailed. Um, you know, there's this discussion about interest, which is, um, important. Um, but we don't talk about how we will determine that interest. Um, you know, we have a cost of capital. It's a lot lower than other people's cost of capital. Uh, we should not be lending at our cost of capital. We should be lending at their cost of capital. Uh, or frankly, you know, whatever, you know, reflects, you know, market interest rate for this type of loan. Um, the other thing is, um, uh, uh, there's this provision here that excludes seemingly hard and fast businesses selling their, 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 their leases or in bankruptcy. Um, and again, that might be too hard and fast. I want to make sure that the program is, is just right, you know, whatever we come up with. Um, and so a hard and fast exclusion on someone as a result of the sale of their lease, you know, I want to see what that lease sale is about. Before I exclude them, you know, you know, it could be something that's good for us. Or it could be something that's bad, you know, it could be something that unfairly enriches, you know, the, 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 the owner of the lease. You know, we don't know, but I think we should look at it on a case by case basis with respect to that. And that brings me to my last point. You know, I think when we go about doing this, we need to look at each and every one of these tenants on a case by case basis. You know, obviously we can put together a structure for, for how we're going to make a decision about whether to, to loan them or grant them our capital, our, our, our residence capital ultimately. Um, but I think we need to look at this on a very individual basis. There's no reason why we can't. We got several different tenants. We can treat them each according to their needs and our comfort. Um, and so, you know, those are my comments for right now on first pass.
Okay. Anyone else?
Madam Mayor, there were some public comments.
Okay, let's go to the public comment.
Um, this was submitted by Lauren Bennett on behalf of Barry Freeman, owner of the Lake Worth Beach T-shirt company. He asked that this be read into the record. The store has been closed since March 19th, 2020. Unlike the restaurants, I have had zero cash flow to pay my payroll and the rent, the two things I care about paying the most. With my personal resources, I have struggled to pay my employees for the past six weeks so they could feed their own families. I have paid my electric bill. I have lost the best part of March, all of April and probably May, depending on when the beach reopens. The busiest time of the year. The spring break, Passover and Easter months are a huge percentage of my yearly revenue stream. I look to you for guidance because I am unable to make any rent payments until July. On April 3rd started my 36 years as a store owner at our beach. I will open my doors again whenever the beach opens with essential items. See attachment, of course. I will only open under CDC PB County guidelines and protocols. I will provide hand sanitizer, masks and gloves for my entire staff. I love this city. I have lived here for 45 years and I plan on being up at the beach for many more years to come. I have seen the good years at our beach. I've seen the down years at the beach. I feel fortunate to still have a presence there. I've seen kids now in their 40s and 50s grow up there and now come in with their kids. It's been a life-changing experience for me. The ideal support you can give me is forbearance for April, May and June. I will resume my regular payments in July and extend my current agreement by 90 days with no penalties. As many corporations have done during these stressful times. I would encourage this commission to be lenient and help me to operate as the viable store I've been for, for the past 35 years. Respectfully, Barry S. Freeman. Then I, we received, um, a letter from Kilwinds. We appreciate the opportunity to operate our Kilwin's store at Lake Worth Casino Building and we look forward to the future together. As you know, Kilwinds, Kilwinds is a place where people celebrate, have fun, share special times and get the best chocolates and ice cream possible. Obviously the economic impact to our business was massive. The season we were waiting for evaporated and took with it at least 40% of our annual gross sales. This economic situation is national and is not our fault, uh, fault of our own. We attempted to stay open during this time for delivery and pickup. And it was complete failure due to the closure of the beach and parking lot. As the uncertainty continues, no upturn forecasted in anytime soon. We are requesting forgiveness of rent for April, May and June 2020. Lowering the rent beyond the above three months until things come back to normal. Please note that we applied for PPP and SBA and have not received any money other than $8,000, which will be used part. Which will be used partly to restock the store. Loan advance. Our P P P application has not been submitted to S B A as of yet by our bank. Regards, Rafi and Maria Kilwinds, Lake Worth Beach. And the final. Request is from Mama Mia's on the Beach. Dear Madam Mayor and esteemed members of the council. First, I'd like to thank you all for taking the time to listen to my letter being read into the record. My name is Anthony Vitiglio, Vitigio, and I am the owner of Mama Mia's on the Beach located at Lake Worth Beach Casino Building. As all of you know, all our businesses have been adversely impacted due to COVID nineteen. Ninety percent of our business is predicated on dining, so it was untenable for us to remain open. Specific rules of the building have inhibited our takeout and delivery business. Mister Bornstein and I have spoken about how to tackle this issue in the future when COVID nineteen situation passes. So we are not solely dependent on beachgoers to sustain our business. The reason to even bring this up is to make the point to the commission that we were essentially forced to close once the beach closed. COVID nineteen stifled the best months of our year. We project that forty to fifty, forty to forty five percent of our annual revenue has been lost. We also lost thousands of dollars in inventory when we had to close. Today, May fifth, twenty twenty, we finally received our P P P funding from the federal government. Seventy five percent of this money will be allocated to our payroll and the other twenty five percent will be allocated to utilities, rent and other allowable expenses. Pursuant to the terms of the loan. We've applied to the E I D L loan. We received our advance, but the S B A still has not processed the rest of the application. Furthermore, they have communicated that there is no timetable as to when it will be processed. Most of the money from the advance has already been spent paying utilities, gas and other bills associated with running the business. In our specific situation, we are requesting the alternative option, but hope for a seventy five percent abatement for May, June, May and June. With no deferral. In the subsequent months, after our P P P funds will be exhausted, we are seeking an abatement and deferral. If the situation does not come back to normal. We especially would need this if the beach is still closed, but of course, we should revisit this at that time. With social distancing and capacity limits, we are unsure how this will impact us in the future. I'm committed to not asking for anything that we don't explicitly need. I'd like to make it clear that even though we've received our P P P loan does not mean that we have a lot of capital. By no means are we a big business. We are a mom and pop business in the classical definition of the term. There will be a lot of expenses associated with reopening, rent, utilities, having the whole store sanitized and restocking our inventory. So we believe an abatement is appropriate in our situation. Another thing that I'd like to note is this, we are committed to rehiring all our employees. But some have moved out of state, planning to go to college and found other work opportunities. With this being said, we will retain anyone who wants to come back. Thank you for taking this time to listen to us. We miss serving a delicious delicious pizza to our beautiful city. We hope to get back to work soon. I hope everyone stays safe. Our thoughts and prayers are with you all. Sincerely, the Mama Mia's on the Beach family. And that's all the comments I have. Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor. You're muted too.
Okay, so a couple of points I want to make. You've heard me before, I'm for deferment. If it's this body's decision to move with forgiveness. We have a budget up there. We, because it's a separate beach fund, we do have the ability to do a little bit more, but. Again, I support deferment. Each one of these businesses are unique to their self and and different. To, to ask for their financials as a small business, you know, I don't support that. Most of all our tenants have lines of credit with the city, you know, that was part of their leases. And, you know, I feel comfortable enough that that. Supports their business and their ability, but this is something unique. For instance, Mama Mia's, I I you hear that. They have lost a lot of product, you know, as a small business, you will have your refrigeration full. If you can't sell that product, you lose that product. Some of it's freeze freezable items that you can hold on to, but most of it you lose. Just like in a hurricane when your power goes down. I'm hearing that these tenants are choosing to pay their utility bills. Which is is a great thing that that they've stepped up to do, but they really need to do that if they're a restaurant because they have to keep their stuff cold. And frozen. I think my main concern is to get the businesses open and getting people back to work. For instance, I think Benny's on the Beach. Had seventy two employees when they closed. They're they're working a few people to keep their to goes open. But that's seventy two people back on payroll. Now, as far as we had a little discussion about P P P and if they got a P P P, they shouldn't get something from us. I disagree with that only because each one is unique to their self. If somebody got a P P P and they're using it to get employees back on the payroll and or to continue to pay them. Why they're not working, I think that's a huge thing. And, you know, I think each one of them is unique to their self. We need them all open and we need to do something for all of them. Barry's shop, you know, completely closed because he didn't have something that he could do in takeout. And as a small business owner, you may have some reserve, but something like this takes all your reserve. And you're not planning, same just like a hurricane, when, you know, the utilities off for a certain period of time, you lose everything in your freezer. You have to completely restock. You have to sanitize. You have to clean. So I think whatever we do, we need to make it consistent across the board. And and try to help each individual. You you heard some asks from them, so that might be a jumping off point. Where we defer for a few months. And each one, you know, has the ability to come back and talk to us about their their needs, just like a utility customer would. We we have the ability to do payment plans and, you know, work with each individual one. But as far as looking at their books and and analyzing whether they've got money in the bank, just because they're a successful business. And they were able to maybe squirrel away a little bit more than somebody else, we should not penalize them. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hardy?
Sure. Just to kind of, you know, recap here, you know, what I heard is that. The commissioner doesn't believe it's appropriate to ask to see their financials before we. Make our financial resources available to them. And that each business is different on its own. And that he doesn't think it's necessarily fair or 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 right or productive. To say that if you've gotten P P P, you shouldn't get anything from us. But then at the end, he says, whatever we do, we should make it consistent across the board. Here's what I'll say. First of all, I I have an issue with the fact that, you know, our local government here is engaged in a commercial real estate enterprise. I don't think that local governments are. The the best folks to be doing the kinds of things that we're doing up there, and I think that adds to the sensitivity and the difficulty of all of this. Because we're, you know, we're a public body. That said, we're in the commercial real estate business, and I can tell you right now. Okay, that if we were the related group, or if we were someone else who's engaged in business as a business person. You wouldn't be making your financial resources available to anyone whose financials you have it personally inspected. And, you know, that's not something that's, well, you know, I I saw the commissioner say that that's not true. You know, you know, what I would say is that that's not savvy. And and I agree, each business is different from, you know, each other, but. I have a problem. Opening up the city's financial resources, which don't belong to any of us. To benefit a private entity. A private for-profit entity. On the premise that that's what we need to do so that they can keep their employees paid. And so that we can keep them on our leases long term without actually verifying that stuff. You know, I agree that if someone gets P P P, but they're using it to keep their employees on the payroll. Then, you know, of of course, that should enter into our consideration, but we have no ability to verify that without looking at what it is that they're doing. With their finances, and we can't just do this on the basis of a of a of a promise or a or a handshake or something of that nature. And, you know, I want to contrast the willingness. By some commissioners to make the city's financial resources available to these private entities with the with what, for example, the owners of the Mid on Dixie Highway just went through. Right? I mean, you know, we had an agreement to give them a certain amount of money. They needed to come up with a bond. They came up with a bond. The bond didn't meet our specifications. We went back and forth with them. Not on whether to have a bond, but on whether their bond met our specifications before we released a dime to them. There was a lot of larynx and wrangling going on for at least a month, potentially more. Because that's how seriously we felt we should guard the public's dollars and the public's financial resources. I get. That this is a time of tremendous need for for folks, for everyone, for absolutely everyone, residents, folks in the business community. But I I I cannot say that we should just open up our resources. Without ensuring that the folks who need who who are asking for them actually need to now recognize that I might not win that vote. That that might not make, you know, the final product here that that that, you know, we we may eventually approve. But I think it's important to do that. The other thing that I was going through, you know, you know, my heart goes out to Barry, to Rafi and Maria, to Anthony Vitiglio. Of Mama Mia's. They're they're in a tough situation right now. And, you know, I I I think we should be, you know, willing to help them, obviously, assuming that we 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 verify their situations. I think we should have some flexibility on the payback period because as they noted, and we would have to verify, I mean, you know, this is what they're saying. That they're in forty to fifty percent of their revenue within certain months. Obviously, I would like to verify that. But yeah, assuming that's true, I don't see how they pay this back over one period. And so, you know, we may have to look at payback periods. We may have to look at the rate of interest. We may have to look at deferral versus abatement. I do not favor an abatement. But, you know, I I I favor a deferral. I want to work with the folks. There are lots of structures we can use to to help these business owners. I want to help them, but we have to do it the right way. And by the way, finally, the right way includes understanding our financial position. You know, we need to know what our financial position is at the beach right now, this moment. We need a report from staff on how many dollars we've lost due to parking not being available and us not being able to charge on at the beach. Parking is the mother's milk of the beach's finances. And we're not able to sell parking spots right now, parking hours. We're not able to do that. So we need to figure out what our financial resources are before we make them available. To other folks. As eager as I am to help them, I just want to make sure that we're doing it the right way. And I can't let this discussion proceed without putting the ideas out there. That would be negligent of me. So those are my thoughts. I guess this is not. An item that we're voting on, but I hope that the things that I've discussed here, examination of the financial position. You know, maybe that needs to be put to a vote eventually, you know, you know, perhaps we should consider requiring them to seek private capital. Perhaps that should be put to a vote eventually. We need to figure out how we're going to determine the interest rate. That needs to be discussed. And the compounding period that needs to be, you know, to to, you know, be discussed where this interest is going to compound annually, monthly, daily, whatever. I think the exclusion of businesses that may be selling their lease, having it hard and fast, you know, we might need to retain some flexibility. Depending on what a lease sale might look like.
Thank you very much. You made some good points there, Commissioner Hardy, but one question I have, is everyone able to meet with the city manager? At least or have phone conversation with the city manager once a week? Or at least before our meetings, have you been able to? Because I that was one of the questions. I appreciate you bringing that up. That was one question I had in reference to the parking revenue. At the beach and all, you know, and all functions, also the golf course. That it would have that having been closed and how many, you know, we just opened up for Saturday and Sunday only and how many rounds are there? These are some talks, just like at the pension board today, the meeting, you know, we're seeing with this, you know, pandemic is doing to the economy. And it's doing to people's life savings and pensions, you know, we need to see how it's affecting us. On a regular basis throughout this process. I know we're going to be starting. Budgeting here shortly, right, our budget workshops, but we need to see what kind of repercussions this is having on all of our operations. And and start to think of, you know, and that that's why I, you know, it seems like sometimes we're arguing about things, but that's why every time we say, oh, let's add a position. Let's add a function. Let's add a this. We don't know how we're coming out of, how we're coming out of this thing right now and and we've got some very real. Needs. These guys, I mean, the businesses at the beach right now. I I I tend to agree with you more of the deferment, but I'm willing to, you know, to to find out more. As staff talks with them, because, you know. The whole thing about about having the meeting with Mike, you know, like it or not, is the fact that he brings staff into those meetings if you request the questions. And staff will come in and meet with you and you can talk to them directly, you know, with with management there, so it gives you the opportunity to say, hey. Ed, you know, what's going on with the electric utilities and what are we seeing, whatever, because I request those things. So if we have items coming up on the agenda, try to get the appropriate. Management head to be there to answer your questions or be on a phone call, especially since we're doing that. And, you know, and 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 get those questions answered so so we can come, because we need to be creating new agenda items. Items to deal with this pandemic and what it's doing to our economy here locally as well. So. I I'm glad this is coming back. I'd be anxious to talk with the individual shop owners. You know, myself to see how that's going to be and to see what their abilities are at this time. The hard part about is I'm a small business owner too, okay? I'm shut down. I'm a non-essential business. I'm shut down. I had three employees. I have to lay off my two of them who are from Lake Worth Beach. I can't open yet. I can't do anything yet and, you know. And all of these other things have happened. I applied for P P P, nothing, applied for S B A, nothing. Haven't seen any money from other than the one stimulus, you know what I mean? And and that's that. I mean, I I'm I'm a real person, a real figure. In here trying to, you know, talk about opening reopening a business that has been in business since nineteen ninety seven. You know, having ninety five percent of my business relying upon the hospitality industry, which has been closed for the most part or or takeout and whatever. You can't imagine how many clients I've lost because of just that aspect of the business, as well as all the shenanigans that went on with the hoo-ha. You know, I'm just saying, how can you, if these people don't get money in their hands. That's it. I mean, I'm with you on the deferment, Commissioner Hardy. I'm going to give you a chance to speak right next, but I'm I'm with you on it. I'm frustrated myself from my private business outside of being mayor. Because we're not seeing that money come in, and I don't know how you not include abatement if. Or some form of abatement, if people are just not getting cash in their hands. Go ahead, you can answer that for me.
Yeah, no, you know, I don't have a, you know, I can I can meet with Mike and another staff member on this particular issue. You know, but but something to be considered is whether we should. Make decisions with information that isn't public.
Bring them into the meeting.
You you know, what I'm saying is, what's in this packet that we received is what's public about the situation here. And the community, we should be making information with the same information that's available to the community is my point. And, you know, I could schedule a meeting with Mike and another staff member on this on this issue, and, you know, as a matter of fact, I will do that. But whatever information we receive in these one-on-ones need to be public as well, so the public can evaluate what's 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 going on there. But I don't I don't object to having a meeting with Mike and another staff member on this particular topic.
Yeah, no, I what I'm saying is like what I do in reference, I just say, you know, and this is maybe just because I've been here a bit, but I just say, okay. I have a question about this and I don't understand this. A lot of times I get those questions from people in the community, right? So I asked to meet with that appropriate department head person or whatever, and I say, I have a problem with X, Y and Z. And then when I come to a commission meeting, I'm saying people in the neighborhood had a problem with X, Y and Z. Can you explain why this happened? I'm not asking to reinvent the wheel. I'm saying that people in the community have a problem. I've already had a chance for that department head to explain to me. Now I want them explained to the public in a public forum. It just gives you an opportunity to wrap your head around it because we're not here every day all the time. To wrap your head around it because we're not here every day, all the time. You know, it, it's helpful. That's all. I was just offering a bit of help. Vice Mayor Protem?
Well, there were two, uh, two in front of me, Madam Mayor.
Oh, hold on a second. Commissioner Robinson, you're first. Sorry about that.
I, I wanted to, uh, know that, uh, Bruce, uh, uh, Finance Department Head was, has any input into? To any of the conversation, any of the suggestions? Uh, well, I'm hoping he did. Um, and, uh, I, uh, just a couple of things, just. Per item, uh, I wanted to extend the, uh, the season to the end of April, not the beginning of April. Um. The, uh, the fact that, that these are six of the most valuable real estate in, in our city, if not the county. Uh, is a consideration that, uh. Uh, deferment makes it a whole lot easier than abatement. Um, and I'm, I'm also, uh. Want to know that we've had a conversation with all, uh, all the tenants. Uh, I, I haven't heard anything about the golf course. Or, or, uh, the beach club. And, um. I want to, uh. Know that, uh, we don't need to know their financials, but I, I do want to know what all the applications. If, if there's an application for, for us to, to them. I want to know the applications that they've applied for in, in terms of, uh. Money. Uh, I don't think, I, I, I don't know how much, uh. Time it's going to take to compute the interest that we're talking about, but I don't know why we're, we're. Really getting into the weeds with the interest on, on money at this point. Uh, and, uh. If we're talking about, uh, consistent. Uh. I think the utilities addressing, uh, the utility costs or payments or, uh. The utilities would be, uh, at a possibility of being consistent. Uh, and then we could also talk about the other. Uh, businesses in town. Um, and we talk about consistent and then we clearly state that every business is unique in its own. So, uh, it's going to be real tough to be consistent and then talk about how different, uh, Bennys is from, uh, the, the T-shirt shop. Um, so we, we need to, uh. Uh, talk, uh, in terms of, uh, doability.
Okay, Vice Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think there's one thing that we can all agree on, and that is no matter what. Uh, ultimately is decided by this body, uh, it's probably not going to be, um. Universally accepted. And, and one thing's for sure, one size does not fit all. Okay, one size absolutely does not fit all. You have. An operator up there that's part of a chain. Actually have two of them that are part of a chain. Uh, you know, so that's, that's, that's a different dynamic too, in terms of financing. But here's, here's what I. What I've, I, what I've heard tonight that I agree with. I would prefer, uh, deferment over abatement. Okay? Um. If it wasn't the pandemic, God forbid, it could have been a hurricane or a tornado that took out their business and they were out for two or three months. Okay? Um, the question that hasn't been asked is. What is the status with these businesses with respect to their insurance? Do they have business loss insurance? And that question needs to be asked. Okay? Um, as far as. Um. You know, the, the time period for defer, any type of deferment, I would suggest that. Common sense tells us that would be easier for these folks if they're creditworthy to go to a bank. And get what they need, not just to cover. The short-term need that they had with the, the loss of, of rent. Okay? But also to get maybe some capital for them to, you know, to re-energize their business. And that payment would be a lot, a lot easier pill for them to swallow in terms of repayment over time. Than it would be by us imposing a five-month repayment. Uh. Provision on, on any type of, um, consideration. And finally, I, I, I agree with, uh, comment that was made about the interest. I mean, at the end of the day. Uh, I'm not so concerned about the interest. As I am concerned about knowing the true financial posi- position of these businesses. Um. Some people might think that's intrusive. Uh, but it's not intrusive. If they had a different landlord, it wasn't the city of Lake Worth Beach. They'd know probability behave, having to go to PNC or, or Chase or somebody else. To seek the funding they need to get by. And that those financials will be required. And as, as a part of the, uh, process for them to, to move forward. So I don't, we're not going to solve this tonight. That's for, for dog on shore, but I think we've, we've got some things to think about. And maybe some things to talk to city manager about. You know, one thing that we haven't. Uh, seen that I, maybe I haven't seen it yet and maybe overlooked it. But what is the actual monthly impact for all these businesses, you know, on the beach? As one lump number, and of course the golf course. You don't want to put them all together because of two separate funds. But you know, how much are we talking in terms of rent? Uh, in totality for the beach? Does the city manager have that number?
You, city manager?
Oh, I'm, I'm not muted. Um, Madam Mayor, I don't have that number. I thought I had it on this sheet here.
Yeah, that would be good.
But that's all part of, if I, 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 I'll, I'll comment after you finish your comment.
So that's basically it, you know, I, I, I certainly don't favor any type of abatement. Uh, at all unless we have a clear understanding what their true financial need is. I'm just, I'm just not. You know, it's not a real good way to, to use the taxpayer money. Uh, as far as I'm concerned, I have to agree with Commissioner Hardy on that point. Um. And also, I guess to a certain extent, something that we, we didn't think about in the early days and of course, we're all. We're all stressed out. We're all emotional. We're all passionate. We're all concerned. We all want to help. We want to do what we think is right. Uh, by these businesses and our neighbors and everything else. But you know, the more we talk about this, the more things are being brought to the surface that need to be considered. And I think that before we jump in with both feet. Uh, I think there needs to be some basic parameters and those parameters, I think really start to begin with. Learning what the true financial position is, number one. Number two, if they've exhausted all their possibilities as far as the federal government is concerned. Number three, do they have business loss insurance? Okay? And number four, you know, have they gone out on the market to, to try to borrow money to get them through this rough spot? That's all I've got.
Vice Mayor?
Um, I just wanted to mention, you know, my heart goes out to all small businesses. And when I made the comment about them being unique, but we need to be consistent, I'd like to talk to the city attorney for a moment. What I meant about consistent, I was always under the, uh, influence that if you do for one, you have to do for all. And, and stay consistent. So that's, that's really what I was referring to. But Madam Attorney, do we have lines of credit? Uh, letters of credit for, for most of our businesses?
Madam Mayor? May I respond?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Maruso, um, so for the. Folks that are at the beach complex, Kilwin's, the T-shirt company, Mamma Mia's, Mulligan's and Bennys. For them, their leases vary on that aspect. Um, Kilwin should have a two-month security deposit on file. The T-shirt company had a cash bond for one year, but that was only for the first five years. So I'm assuming. That that has gone away. Mamma Mia's should have a letter of credit on file, which is a one-year deposit of rent.
They're a new tenant, so that should be up to date.
Yes, and we got that when it was recently assigned. So we know that's up to date. Um, Mulligan's should also have a credit for one year worth of rent on file with the city. Um, Benny's lease that was redone in two thousand thirteen did not require a security deposit. Um, that lease was done with the prior owner. Um, who was a long-term tenant at that point, so we did not require a security deposit. Um, if you go to the other sort of, uh, leases that the city has, like at the golf course with the beach club. There, that is a little bit of a different sort of concessionaire contract. There's no security deposit with that one. Um, we also have a lease with Oceanside Beach Service that do the chairs at the beach. There's no deposit with that as well.
So some of them we have financials on, some of them we don't. So traditionally it's not always, you know, that we, we get financials on everyone and.
If I may, Madam Mayor, just to clarify on that issue.
Sure.
I was just speaking to the security deposits.
Okay.
As to, as to, yeah, as to financials. Um, from a legal standpoint, we don't really request the financials. Because from a legal standpoint, we don't really review financials. So if there is a consideration to look at each business's finances. Um, we really probably need to speak to Bruce Miller about. Who has the qualifications to look at these different businesses' financials and determine, you know, where they stand. Um, that's not really the, the, the legal department.
And for the record, Madam Attorney, has, have the tenants paid their April rents?
Um, my understanding and the city manager might be able to, to fill in more of this is that. They've paid for March, but nobody has paid April. But I don't know if that information has changed. That was information I had as of last week.
Okay.
That's my understanding.
Okay, you have your hand still, City Manager? Are you done?
No, I wanted to let the commission go ahead and talk. I was just going to wrap up.
Okay, I'll come to you afterwards. Then Vice Mayor Protem?
Yeah, I, I think that the, the city attorney and, and Vice Mayor Amarosa raised a very interesting point and something I guess I wasn't thinking of. And that was. These security deposits, you know, what is the purpose of a security deposit? You know, you've heard discussions around the country about certain states allowing, changing their laws. To allow security deposits to be used as a form of payment to catch people up or try to keep them in the game. So I think that's something we also need to look at. As far as financial concern, I'm a little bit. You know, I was here back when these leases were, were let. And I, I'd really hate to think that I was misled back in the day to think that these folks were just granted leases. Without benefit of us doing any type of a background check or financials on these folks before they actually signed a lease. Uh, that would, that would cause me. To lose a little bit more of the hair that I have on my head because I certainly. Thought that back in those days, especially given the nature, the contentiousness of those leases or whatever. That, uh, the city had done its due diligence and we were in fact granting leases to folks that were qualified to have leases. And, um, and the third point, the final point too, uh, is as. Uh, Vice Mayor Amarosa has stated a couple of times, they're very different and each one of these. Uh, businesses has a different lease. Those leases are not the same. So you're not going to be able to. I mean, it sounds nice to say, well, you gotta do one, do for one, but you gotta do for everybody else. But the terms of each one of those leases is different. Therefore, by that very nature, it comes down to, you know, negotiating or, you know, working with each one of these tenants on a one-on-one basis.
Which is exactly a reason why we shouldn't be in commercial business, real estate altogether. I think Commissioner Hardy, you said that earlier. You know, we shouldn't be in it. We, we've, you know, cities don't operate commercial businesses well, you know what I mean? That's where, that's why other cities choose public-private partnerships and other types of things to take the city out of that because we're not operational people like that. In regards to commercial businesses. In addition, I was going to refer Vice Mayor Protem, exactly. You know, we came on the tail of that, um, whole thing with the leases on the building and that's, I, probably one of the reasons why I talk about consistency. Not to, to beat over the head, but basically. Because there was so much inconsistency while the city was trying to run businesses as opposed to just a city, it was all screwed up. This one paid this, this one paid that. I remember the bargaining and, and, and bidding on, on the commission floor against one another. You know, when they had already put their best and final in and they were like, well, if I knew what I could pay more money, then I'll pay more money. And people were fighting back and forth. I mean, it was crazy. Um, but that's what we do. Uh, but you know, that's the reason I, I fight for consistency is just to try to have some sort of clear policy. Not because I don't understand that each person's situation is different. Um, but it's just, it's become really hard to do that, was why we shouldn't be in that business. But. Um, I, I, I'm glad that the business owners spoke forward about it. Um, I understand. You know, Barry's shop, he couldn't do pickup and delivery, you know, the retail businesses are all shut down. I understand for ice cream maybe being a quick melt product or whatever, it's hard to. To run that from a pickup or delivery kind of thing. Um, as for the golf course, you know, we haven't even really talked about that, but. When they close down the whole golf course park with closing the gates and chains, that pretty much shuts. The beach club out, doesn't it? So, um, I, you know, I, I guess we have to have individual talks on it to see what the financial repercussions of everything is. We got to know the numbers. And see how it's going to play out for our budget because we know we're losing all the parking revenue at the beach and everywhere else. So, um, I need totally to see the numbers and to talk with the individual business owners and see. You know, what's palatable for everybody at this point. I do know, oh, I wanted to bring up this one thing. I do know for myself. And, and if you want to, not to go into the financials necessarily, but if you do want to use like the government uses. In regards to it, did you apply for an SBA loan? Did you apply for the PPP program? You know, you can apply for all of them. But they're going to ask you if you applied to those individual ones. Or you, did you apply to it and did you receive money? Did you apply to it? Did you receive money? That, that's one thing that each of the different opportunities from the, from the state and from the feds. Give you that opportunity to do is to know that in your filling out that application. That might be, that would be helpful. But let me see, who's that? Commissioner Hardy?
Yeah, um, you know, one thing we. One thing, one thing we might consider, um, you know, the, 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 the issue of the deposits came up. Uh, yeah, you know, if, if we could potentially use the deposits. Uh, as, as payment, that might be something that should obviously be on the table along with the proposal. To have the tenant replenish the deposit over a period of time. And again, that period of time doesn't have to be a single season. It can be, you know, multiple, you know, most of these tenants are, are long-term tenants here. Most of them want to be long-term tenants here. Um, and when they're in business, we get our, 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 our rent from them. Um, my, 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 and, and, yeah, and, and that's their money and it's not our money. Right? And so, you know, that might be something that we should consider. Um, very strongly, frankly, and, and I, I'm much more willing to do that without. Much in the way of due diligence or any due diligence in the way of their finances because again, it's, it's not our money. The second our money gets involved, that's when I, I have an issue. Uh, as far as making that, those resources available to people without making sure that they need it. Um, so, you know, the whole deposit thing should definitely be on the table, provided that there's a plan. To get it back. As Ms. Godot said, each lease is separate. We can go into this. Um, second to last, we may want to consider. There's talk of a special session of the legislature. There's going to have to be talk of a, you know, there's, 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 there's going to have to be a special session. Um, we have, you know, a, a fantastic lobbyist in Richard Penske. And, you know, perhaps we should, we should make it. Uh, uh, a, a, a point to, uh, uh, lobby the legislature and the governor. Uh, not for us individually, well, obviously, you know, anything we can get individually, we would have to consider that, but. Other folks are already talking about how there should be a, 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 a more serious small business loan program from the state of Florida. And there's, 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 there's not a particularly serious one. Uh, it's, it's hard to, to have a program like that when you don't. Get any revenue. Ninety-nine percent of corporations in the state pay no state income tax every year. Um, but, you know, that's another matter. We should consider. Uh, adding our voices to the call to do that if there's a, a special session. The last thing, Christie, can you, can you educate us on closed sessions? Um, I understand that closed sessions are allowed when there's litigation. And when we're in union negotiations, obviously I don't want to negotiate out in the public. Uh, but this might not. Be something that admits of a closed session situation where the commission gets to go in, in a, in a, in a room. That's not in the public and figure out how we're going to negotiate with these folks so that we're not doing it out in the, out in the open. Um, if we, if we get to that point, can you tell us a little bit about special closed sessions?
Madam Mayor? May I respond?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Hardy, um. With closed sessions, you have to have a specific exemption under Florida statute. To have a meeting with two or more commissioners to talk about a matter that's foreseeably going to come before the commission for direction. So you mentioned, and you're correct, there is an exemption for litigation. Um, there's other exemptions also, like you meant for, uh, union negotiations and things like that. I am not aware offhand of any type of closed session that the commission could have. To discuss, you know, a potential rate deferment or rent deferment. Um, for its tenants. Um, you know, if there were the situation where for some reason the city was going to file litigation. Based on non-payment, that is a potential, but even then. When you get into that exemption for litigation, it is limited in scope and it's more dealing with. Your litigation strategy and expenditures for that litigation. So, you know, I wouldn't want to unless we had some, some other clear guidance that we could use a litigation. Exemption like that. And when I say imminent litigation. I mean, really within the next week, you're filing some type of litigation and, and, you know, I think we, we. Figure out a better way that we could do this, perhaps through one-on-one meetings. And it may have to come down to some type of public discussion. About how we're going to deal with each tenant or the, all the tenants the same.
Yeah, and you know, I, 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 I thank you for that. I'm not sure if it's to the point where we have something to really negotiate in that way, right? But, and you know, I don't, I don't know if it's. You know, what we're talking about is of a size that would. Lend itself to us, you know, that would really suggest we should be in a room privately discussing this. But, you know, i, 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 if it, if it gets to that point, you know, for example, we have these closed sessions about. You know, someone slipped and fell on the sidewalk and sued us. And we're trying to figure out how much we should settle with them for, you know, that, you know, the way I, I think about some of this stuff. If it gets to that point, you know, it could be kind of a, a prepackaged. Result, I, you know, I don't, I don't want to say that we would start litigation with the idea. Of, you know, pre-packaging a settlement. You know, with, with someone just so that we could get in a room and negotiate and negotiate fairly with the other side, but that's what came to mind. I hope it doesn't get to that point, you know, with anyone. I hope we could figure this out, you know, pretty quickly. And also that would keep, at least for the time being, if we need their financial situation, their financials under. You know, not public, so that they don't have their financials out for, for Joe Blow. But that's just a, 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 a thought that occurred to me and I wanted to have more information about it. Not to say that I endorse the thought at all, but thanks for the information.
You're welcome.
Vice Mayor?
No, I'm good.
Okay, City Manager, you want to wrap it up? Yep. Mike?
Oops, sorry. Thank you for all your comments and thoughts on this. I think we've gotten some good direction here. The financials will wrap all that up for you, but to give you kind of a. Order of magnitude, the beach fund. In the leases that we have up there for everybody. Mamma Mia's is the only that, one that's paid for April. The rest haven't paid us yet. And that's about seventy thousand dollars that's due. If you total all those up. On the parking side, to give you another kind of an idea of the size we're talking about here. It's about two twenty-five in revenues and another twenty-five thousand in, in fines. For people violating the parking rules that there's, it's about a quarter of a million dollars a month and that's for April. So it, it's, the beach is like everything else taking a beating. And whatever you do is obviously going to make the situation worse. We, we entered into this discussion about having a consideration for the tenants up there. From an economic sort of development side of the, the equation. And trying to help them out and help keep people employed. But I think we've gotten some enough direction here to go to the next level of, of discussions and negotiations and. I don't know that I have any other comments or questions. Other than I appreciate your time and, and your thoughtful, thoughtful comments. It was greatly appreciated.
Thank you very much. City Attorney, do you have a report? City Attorney?
No, Madam Mayor, I do not. Thank you.
City Manager, did you have anything?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I got a few things if I could. Just wanted to let you know, the Board of County Commissioners had session today and there was a couple of things that came up. One is they voted to send a letter to the governor urging. Allowing the county to move into phase one like the rest of the state and sort of separate us out, I guess, from the, the South Florida region. And that was a six oh vote of the commissioners. They also will be having a meeting workshop this Friday at nine thirty to talk about beach reopening. And to go over that topic, which is something we're obviously going to watch very closely. They also had some presentations on testing and the numbers. As you know, in the central part of, of the county. Green Acres, Palm Springs, Lake Worth Beach and the unincorporated areas, we have some of the highest rates of. Positive cases. However, we're not seeing the level of testing and that was kind of mentioned earlier by a couple of you. We are doing everything we can to try to coordinate with the groups that are doing testing, the not-for-profits. Mary, you mentioned some of the efforts that are going on. I would like to ask the commission's consensus to authorize the mayor to sign a letter. Along with the mayors of Palm Springs and Green Acres. Representing this region to the county commission to urge them to provide testing, more testing, some testing. It's something that's needed here. I think we all understand that. And if y'all are okay with it, we have a crafted letter between the three cities that we would like to issue and have the mayor sign it. And get copies of the draft out to everybody, if that's okay with the commission to have her do that on your behalf.
Please do.
Yes. Yes.
Okay. And I think that's it, Madam Mayor. I appreciate it.
All right. Thank you all for your very thoughtful comments today. I know we're all going through a tough time. I mentioned that earlier to people, but. We, uh, we, we need to be a team and I really appreciate you all. Commissioner Hardy?
Question for the manager being as now, you know, I go on the White House's website, it says. What you need is a fourteen-day downward trajectory of positive cases before you go into phase one. That was one of the criteria. That was, you know, that was there. We don't have such a track record in Palm Beach County. We just had our second highest day. Two days ago on, what was that, May third? So I don't, I don't see why we should be going into phase one reopening, but in the event that the county. Goes into phase one reopening, I, I think, you know, I, 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 we need to know more about. What we would, how, how we would be able. To decouple from the county if we feel that the county is moving too quickly towards reopening. And I need to know what the city's posture is with respect to beaches. And, and, and other businesses, because right now we don't have an order that, that basically shuts things down. We are operating under the county's order. Well, if the county changes its order, then that would become effective here unless we. Have the ability and decide to decouple from the county at some level based on our own judgment. Because that's. Yeah, so I need to know what our situation is and how prepared are we to do that?
Madam Mayor, that's why we're interested in seeing what the county's tact is on this because up until this point. There's been some consistency from. The county administrator and the mayor and the health department on. Making sure we sort of all work together as the, the region to the south, which we're all kind of in the same boat here. So we'll be really interested to see what they're, they're going to say. I know that several. There's a little bit of a dust-up that may be occurring on the county commission among the members. They're not all starting to. Stay in ranks on this issue of, of reopening and the beaches. So I guess my answer is based on what we're starting to see as best we can and then we can bring back to y'all your options. Or go ahead and explain your options to you and if we need to, we can always call a special meeting or. Maybe the timing is such that it would come to our next meeting for direction. It would be my request that the county give us enough lead time. On their decisions so that we would have the ability to understand the full impacts. But, you know, internally.
Reach out to her and ask, and ask if we can get that for our next commission meeting. So we can start to have the conversations as a whole commission rather than just one community. Talking to her at a time, you know, we, we need to know how this is going to roll out, what we're going to need to do. And we have to make decisions that are best for our community.
Well, I want to be very clear, Madam Mayor, and, and this has nothing to do with the timing issue of which Commissioner Hardy's asking. But internally, staff and our partners have been working on our reopening plans because you need to be planned, as, as was said earlier. You need to have the plans in place on how we're going to do this because it's hard to go from a full stop to, you know, starting up again. Because we expect there to be significant influx of, of people wanting to go to the beach, for example, that, that happens. Or the restaurants go to twenty-five percent. So we've already been working on those plans. It's just. We had kind of anticipated there was going to be several more weeks before we saw. The county and the state come off of this position, so.
Commissioner?
Yeah, and you know, I just, I, I, you know. We don't, we don't have anything in place. To prevent. Regulations from being lifted that we may not want to be lifted. And so, you know, if the county, for example, I don't, I haven't looked to see exactly when our next regular meeting is. But if the county said between now and then. That we're reopening beaches and we're reopening restaurants, for example, at twenty-five percent to fifty percent capacity. We would, we don't have anything in place written up to enact immediately. To say, well, well, here we're not ready to do that because we don't have an order. Other, other cities have, have orders that are, that are, you know, shutting down unnecessary commercial activity, unnecessary activity. And so as the county peels off its layer, their layers are still there. We don't have that. And so. I, I, you know, I just need a commitment that if the county does some stuff to remove some of this. You know, prohibitions. That, 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 that we would basically not participate in that until this body has had a chance to weigh in. The only way to do that is to enact an order that mirrors the county's exactly. Layer it underneath the county so that when the county peels theirs off, we have time between when they do it and the next time we meet. Because otherwise, it's, 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 you know, I, 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 and I, I watched the meeting like everybody else watched the meeting. There's a lot of pressure from folks to, especially folks from South County. To open up businesses, even though there are significant risks to, 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 to people out there. You know, you want to go to FUD records even though it could. You know, potentially increase the spread of this, you know, virus. And, and also, you know, there's, we've had the conversation. That we shouldn't have things in place that we can't enforce. And, you know, what I brought up was, you know, the no mask, no surface policy. But if the county goes to twenty-five percent capacity, can we enforce, in, in, in restaurants, can we enforce that?
Well, let's bring this back as a, let's bring this back on the next item, the next meeting or have an emergency, whatever you guys want to do, but. We're not prepared to. You know, to get the right staff with us right now and to also bring the county in on certain issues that we could ask them. As to what they're going through. I think right now they've got to decide what they're going to be doing within their own selves right now, but. City Manager, I just, we, we normally don't do this at the end of, after the city manager's report. I agree and I appreciate these things. I think we need to have it as an agenda item. And have backup and we need to start seeing numbers. We need numbers for every, every item that comes before us as we deal with this pandemic. We have to have those numbers in front of us. I don't want to report or I don't want an agenda item that doesn't have associated numbers involved with it at this point.
Madam Mayor, I just want to leave with this last comment. If the county pulls its administrative orders. We still are operating also under the state's orders, so we would have to go back and, and look more detail. Because there's so many out there, it makes your head swim. That would give us some of the authorities, I think, of what Commissioner Hardy's concerned with, but we would. Definitely monitor. We're going to come back with some recommendations. We'll keep you informed on what's going on.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And again, I appreciate all of you. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second? Second? All those who favor states, so by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Great meeting, guys. Good night. Thank you to everyone at home. Be safe.
Very much.
Wash your hands, wear your masks.